Director Basada, Director Kirk, Director Osborne, Director Tischler, Director McPherson,
Here.
Director Smith, Director Curtis,
Here.
Director McLure. We have a quorum present.
So first item, we do have an application for exception of spacing requirements. The district has received an application for play free for proposed new wells to be drilled in Ellis County. This new well is closer than the minimum 50 foot to a joint property lines. They have indicated on their application that the location would be 30 foot from the property lines. As you will note in your packet, we have included a copy of the letter that was sent to the joint landowner notifying of this minimum spacing request. To date, we have not received any comments or concerns from that property owner indicating that they would object to this. I don't know, Mr. Freed is here today. He has something he would like to add to this. Adam?
Hi, I'm Clay. I actually spoke to the neighbor in person. He has no issue regarding it. Michael's been after the property. It's mostly underwater. There's only a little bit of land around the boundary line of the property. So the best location the well driller determined for the well would be at this exact location. It's just that spacing. This is about 30 feet. The property is just a hunting property. It's used maybe two to three times out of the month. It's just good fun to a toilet, shower. It's almost no use to jump.
And am I correct that the nearest well to that property is like 900 foot away?
Correct. And there's a big body of water separating, you know, the neighbor and then it's just a little strip of land on my side of that water bound line. So there's not a possibility with him putting a well in another 50 feet or 100 feet.
Mr. Freed, can you verify how deep this proposed well would be?
He said deep.
Okay. I thought that's what it was, but I wouldn't.
Your land, oh, foreign land or you have the option?
No, it was, it was gravel mined at some point. So it's all pitted out.
That we approved the application for spacing exception play free subject to the previous drilled well being plugged according to the TDLR standards prior to drilling the new well. Have verified by staff. And also trimming pipe, trimming cement, fresh cement, the well, new one. Or deepest in is two to one ratio which is also required for TDLR.
And if the driller has questions regarding completion requirements for the new, please have it contact myself or Michael Eager. As you've mentioned, TDLR requires these type of completion thing that's less than.
Have motion in second call in favor of I? I'd oppose. Open second close vote here in all favor of I? Oppose. Okay.
Director Basada, Director Kirk, Director Osborne, Director McPherson, Director Tischler, Director Smith, Director Curtis, Director McLure. We have a quorum present.
Our next hour of the comments. Signed up to speak. Next item is consent agenda. All items are considered self explanatory and may be considered. Have motion in second. Consent agenda discussion. Not all favor I? Oppose. Out five. Received the presentation of the 2021 financial audit. Brian Thomas.
So the audit, we'll start with page two. Page one and two of the auditors. Next section, pages three, three seven. Announced it. Let's just provide some detail. What they can do is we take that one aside from Ellis County. First, 29. Total actual revenues. All section is the notes to the financial statements. Questions?
Our fourth record question came in last week. Audit financial statements. Let's make sure. I'll play that.
So I want to kind of change it up a little bit today. One of the things I want to do going forward, first of all, I'd like to introduce Ryan Watts. He's our new controller. That will be doing our financials for the district. I'm very pleased to have Ryan here. So I've asked him to come forward and even though we have listed the financials as part of the consent agenda, I'm going to be pulling that out as a separate line item so that we can have more of a discussion on our financials going forward. Think that's a little bit more transparent for our public to be able to talk to, to ask questions and stuff. So I've asked him today to give a, this kind of general update.
If you noticed in your board package, we included both a balance sheet and the profit and loss. Both of these reports are as of, we closed the business on May 31. And as you can see from the balance sheet, we have a cash position of 1.6 million in bank, which is very strong addition to this small and young entity. And jumping over to. I'm getting my feet grounded onto the routine of the organization. May is one of those months where we're just sending out the monthly invoices for our, for our clients. So it's kind of a lackluster in regards to the amount of revenues they get through to the financial statements. June obviously is when we're sending out our quarterlies, much more positive revenue impact. But also adding several what I would call non-recurring type of financial ventures. General counsel, legal counsel, database development, those type of things which are more. Things that we detail on. Can you find, I know this is not unless we, you know, the, the counter receiving 5,000. Yes, sir. Those are primarily the monthly invoices that we're sending.
One of the things I've been visiting with Ryan Watts is to go forward. First of all, when we contracted with our current auditor, it was a two-year contract with a two-year. And I certainly think that is something we want to be doing. But I also think having Ryan here and the way he has been able to upgrade our accounting system. I think we need to, when we reach out to Bill for our next two years, look at negotiating those costs. I think we have to see that he's able to hand them over better or more accessible information to make that audit a lot easier to handle. One of the things that we'll be doing is pulling the budget committee together pretty soon to look at, you know, recommendations for 2022, 2023 audit. Budget committee has any other items they don't put on the radar, they let it down. I'll put that on. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Just a few updates kind of going off of the busy month that I've had, you know, coming through April and May as we kind of wrapped up the school year. We had quite a few presentations through our water education trailer for several school districts. The trailer was at Advantage Academy in Waxahachie on May 21st. And we also were hosted by Glen Rose Junior High on May 24th. And then also last week, the water education trailer was present at a natural resources camp in Whitney. And we also, a day or two later, the, some of the local 4-H water ambassadors were there as well for the water education presentations and activities for this camp attendees. And I also want to point out that our rainwater harvesting 101 workshop was a success. We had 31 attendees or 30 participants. And these were attendees from Johnson, Ellis Hill, and Somerville Counties. So we did have representation from each of those four counties. And we also had attendees that came as far from Terrent Hood and Dallas County as well. There was great feedback. They seemed to really enjoy the information, the opportunity to learn more about rainwater harvesting and also to put together their own rainwater harvesting barrel. And I've had a few who have already emailed me and told me that they've started implementing their rainwater harvesting system. Thankfully, it started raining those few days after they put together the system so they could go home and start to use it right away. And we also, and for those of you who may not have seen it, we released a promotional slash educational video about the Water Efficient Product Tax Savings Weekend that was going on over Memorial Day weekend. The last I checked at the end of last week is I was putting together this report, that video had reached over 1,500 people. So we were excited to put that together and provide that to the public and promote that information about that water efficient product savings that they could utilize. So some other upcoming events. You know, it's kind of going to slow down now that school's over, but looking forward to, we're going to be at Rio Vista Elementary for summer school classes next week and then a presentation for the Cleburne Lions Club in July. And I want to briefly touch as well on the event we had on Friday morning here at the office. We hosted a Texas Well Owners Network Well Educated Half Day Session. So from about 8:30 to a little bit after 12, representatives from Texas Well Owners Network were here providing an educational overview presentation on some of the basics of private well ownership and maintenance. And we had 41 attendees there as well. And those were also individuals from all four counties within our district and a few from Hood and Giraffe and Boski Counties. So that initiative also involved working with the local county extension offices within each of these counties. And each of those four extension offices agreed to work with this program. And so it was a good way to kind of build relationships there and help spread the word for our public and our well owners to attend this event and learn more about how they could better conserve and take care of their private wells. So unless there are any questions, that is all I have to report this morning. But I would love to answer any questions or provide any more details on what I've discussed.
Thank you, Chair. One of the things I want to stress, you know, Sinclair has really done a lot this last 30, 40 days since her last meeting. Around a four, five day vacation. So I'm very impressed with the turnout. It's interesting to see that the, the last are reaching over 100,000 outside of our district. And, you know, conservation is not just stopped in the county line. So even though we want to saturate our area, it's good to see over 100,000 as well. And so I, I was there to help just find the entertainment. Everybody wanted to party, see, march off. And everyone was so excited about this. I think that we have, I hope we said, maybe we'll wait on the rank. But other than that, the things we've been working on here, staff is really working on this historic permit application. We're now ready, you know, session's over. Our goal is to get our council to the point where we can be part of a city's hearing. I want to really brag on the staff and what they do to work with these permittees. It's not an easy task when a lot of these entities have really no record. The way the rules previously were set up, it's the well was smaller than 17.36. It didn't have to either report to the district. So, you know, we have kind of a hybrid mix of some of the applications where they might have some wells within that system that was reported to the district and stuff. And I'm trying to look back through records with state and verify all of this. Hasn't always been. In fact, it's been pretty tough. They finished doing it and put a smile on. The officials were working with the one master and smiled back at us. So again, the goal is to get council to identify a timeframe on city needs for approval. We've also worked quite a bit the last 30 days on some of our city enforcement. Fall back and March enabled. April, the board authorized me to negotiate settlement agreements. Some of those have been fairly complicated, which we've been working on. But we're getting down to the finish line. City of Burleson has submitted their sign and sit order and waiting on. But I do know that the payment was required. It was approved by city council and they're going through the process to get that. We are also kind of getting down. Carroll Water Company and Howard Water Company are kind of our last two outstanding. Ryan has been talking back and forth a lot with operator, Frank, both of those systems. And Ryan, I do have a hotel in Carroll Water. We got some papers today, but we still need to talk about that because of some other situations that come up regarding, you know, that system itself. And how that might complicate the settlement agreement we proposed. The Rubik Kilo updated. Also, everyone should have received first part of last week, committee assignments that President Basada sent out. One of the committees, the plant development committee is in the middle of a meeting. And this is where, right, we're sending, we're only going to send out a due proposal today. I scheduled that within the next two to three weeks. Talking about wealth, updating our wealth spacing tool as well as our monitoring program or what steps is needed to kind of go forward in planning on what we want to, how to enhance that program to better provide science to this district. Also, I'll be reaching out to Director Kirk regarding rules committee meeting. I know we've talked previously about water laws and how this district would like to consider possible rules to address that. So we'll be looking at setting up those meetings probably July, first part of August. If there's any other items or interests within the committee, please. Oh, also letters to Commissioners' Court were sent out first part of June regarding board appointments that expired at the end of July. Asking Commissioners' Courts to get those on their agendas to either reappoint or appoint someone for those terms that are already expired. I do know for a fact Johnson County was very proactive and immediately, I already said that for agenda and Paul Tischler has been reappointed for another four years. So I did hear from Somerville County, they will be setting their, their out of court action at the July, the first week of July. And I had a cutback from Phil or Ellis, but I did talk to Director. Unless someone has other questions, that would be all I have to report. So one of the things we have, they are ready to roll that out, what we found in these test runs that we're doing. There are still some things that are just not working right or they didn't understand the process of our rules. So we're having to wait something. I probably will be bringing a change order back to y'all first at the July meeting. And it's not large amount, but it's a very important changes, you know, it's kind of frustrating on me, I think, because we feel like some of our conversations were very clear on things that we didn't think that didn't get interpreted, interpreted correctly that way. I know Brian Watts is also working with them to update the pay, paying market side in. You know, we can talk about how we want to get away from merchant services, collection of all those fees. Brian has identified a service that will allow, if Brian, do you mind coming to tell them what that is? He can explain it, I can't.
For government fees, whether it be property tax or income taxes. It's been directed to a company, probably 90% of the time called Certified Payments. And that is. Certified payments is only deals with government entities. And what they will do is they will automatically add these onto the amount of charge so that if they pretend to us 100% of the amount. $18,000 plus that in the budget. Also give our clients, our customers, the option of whether they want to use a credit card, debit card, or a paycheck. They want to reach that, it's simply just a dollar fifty fee with that. Finish thing. So even some of our larger customers.
And so eliminates that merchant service company and the, you know, anyone that's dealt with those, you have the fluctuation, the different fees depending on what type of credit card you use. Trying to track how much, you know, our expenses are tied to that versus, you know. Their cost to us is. For credit card. Now a check is just a dollar fifty. But what I like about it, the interface has the deal where, you know, the future wants to use it, all the acknowledgements are there that they're, you know, I don't have to provide all that type of work that would be required to do through checks. So again, that's one of the things half while they were designing the system, they were designed to work with merchant services. Once we found this, we asked them to go this route. They're indicating that would be a change order. We're arguing with them. Me and Brian, it looks like just changed the name of the account. Once we get all those little items rolled together, I'll bring that back to the board. I may ask that. I may ask that half come themselves to complete that since I think some of it's. Outside of what, I mean, I really think it would have been extracted, so. Any other questions? On the cybersecurity, they did amend that one. To me, I thought it was a little confusing how I heard them talk about the changes. But the key there is still that director. Well, I keep hearing the data banks, none of our directors' iPads are accessible to the database. I know Top Lane's Victoria was talking about that they're taking it because they have iPads. But I think that's not. What is it? I don't even think this board thinks the 25%.